Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the IONELA Chamber. Today is Wednesday, November 17, 2021. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the City Council President pro tempore. Welcome to the council meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Royo.
Present.
Counselor Royo, present. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, present. Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Bach, present. Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Braden, present. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Campbell, present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Edwards, present. Counselor Savi George.
Present.
Counselor Savi George, present. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, present. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, present. Counselor Janey. Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Mejia, present. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor O'Malley, present. Quorum is present.
Thank you very much. This may be the first time that "O" is the last name in the council's alphabet. Very interesting. Viewers can watch our council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. And for our clergy, Counselor Andrea Campbell has invited our Assistant City Clerk, Clerk Alex Jertis, to deliver the invocation. And after our invocation is said, Counselor Campbell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Honoring the diversity of our spiritual heritages and the unity of our human condition, I invite you silently to call upon what is highest and deepest by the name you hold sacred and dear. Spirit of life and love, mover of the compassionate heart and human mind, melder of community, be present to us as we gather in celebration and endeavor. May we be alight with your fire in all our works. We welcome the many presences here, each person uniquely formed and still forming in life's crucible, each one in turn a gift and a giver to the world. Creating, sustaining, renewing spirit, he with us today in our glad greetings, in our heartfelt thanksgivings, and in our bittersweet farewells. Be with us as we seek to embody your love in all our works. Be with us now and always. So be it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for those inspiring words. Now, if you are able, please rise as Counselor Campbell leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now moving on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion of the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Moving right along to communications from Her Honor, the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket 1166?
Docket number 1166. Message in order for your approval and order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate the amount of $1,212,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study and schematic design associated with the boiler and window and door replacement projects at certain Boston public schools. This includes the payments of all costs incidental and related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Docket 1166 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket 1167?
Docket number 1167. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $13,520,000 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 21 Urban Area Security Initiative, awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. The fund will continue to support planning, exercises, trainings, and operations that build regional capacities to help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents.
Thank you. Docket 1167 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read dockets 1168 through 1171 together?
Docket number 1168. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,070,874 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 Title III C, awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston. These services are enhanced by Federal Nutrition Services Incentive Program and State Elder Lunch Program Grants. Docket number 1169. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,6875 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 22 Title III B for supportive services, awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund supportive services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1170. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to expect to accept and expend the amount of $526,120 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 22 Title III E, awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund caregiver services for older adults in the city of Boston. Docket number 1171. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $417,870 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 22 Title III A, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund costs for administration of Title III programs.
Thank you very much. Dockets 1168 through 1171 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read docket 1172?
Docket number 1172. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $171,242 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 20 Title III Ombudsman, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund services and advocacy for seniors in nursing homes.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Liz Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Docket 1172 is a federal grant in the amount of $171,242. And again, as has been explained, it will fund the Age Strong Commission services and advocacy for seniors in nursing homes. Our committee recently heard a hearing on a similar grant, items in funding Age Strong's elder services, which included additional discussion of these anticipated funds, which were in process. We look forward to continuing the work with Age Strong and supporting their important work. And on behalf of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules in passage of, ask to pass these, accept and expend these funds. Thank you.
You've got it. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on docket 1172? Seeing none, Counselor Liz Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1172. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read docket 1173?
Docket number 1173. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $92,735.50 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 21 Emergency Management Performance Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Agency, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President O'Malley. As the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeking suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, which is a relatively low amount, given the other dockets and grants that go to this committee. And so the grant is pretty self-explanatory. It supports renovations and upgrades to the Operations Center. They'd like to receive this money as soon as possible, and so seeking suspension of the rules and passage today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 1173? Seeing and hearing no one. Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1173. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The order has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read docket 1174?
Docket number 1174. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $81,275 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 22 Title III D, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund health promotion and evidence-based services for older adults in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Liz Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Docket 1174, again, is very self-explanatory. The sum of $81,275, which will fund health promotion and evidence-based services for our older adults. This is critically important work, and on behalf of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and passage of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 1174? Seeing none, Counselor Liz Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1174. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1175.
Docket number 1175. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 First Responder Naloxone Administration Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase of naloxone and related supplies for use by the Boston Police Department.
The Chair once again recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This grant obviously is relatively small as well, and they obviously want to get these resources in the Police Department as soon as possible to purchase naloxone, which is really important, given what the crisis we're seeing in the city of Boston. It also funds supplies. We've gotten this before, and we've frankly requested probably more from the department. The department's probably requested more, so I'm seeking suspension and passage of this docket today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 1175? Seeing none, Counselor Andrea Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1175. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The order has, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, docket 1176?
Docket number 1176. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,000 in the form of a grant for the National Arts Program, awarded by the National Arts Program Foundation, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events. Chair Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The grant was awarded by the National Arts Program Foundation to be administered by Arts and Culture. The grant will fund event costs for the employee art exhibit, and I'm moving for suspension and passage of docket 1176, and seeing that this is just in the amount of probably to have five or six of us go out to dinner, I think we should just pass it. Thank you.
I want to go out to dinner with you, Mr. Chairman. It sounds like a good meal.
Make yourself available.
Any further discussion on docket 1176? Seeing none, the Chair, Counselor Frank Baker, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1176. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Moving right along to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets 1177 through 1180?
Docket number 1177. Communication was received from Maureen Joyce, City Auditor, transmitting reports listing transfers made solely for the purpose of closing accounts for fiscal year 2021. Docket number 1178. Notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Daniel R. Green as Secretary of the City of Boston Licensing Board for a term expiring June 7, 2026. Docket number 1179. Notice was received from Counselor Wu of her resignation from the Boston City Council effective November 16, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. And docket number 1180. Communication was received by the City Clerk from the Board of Election Commissioners certifying the results of the election held for Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Dockets 1177 through 1180 will be placed on file. Moving right along to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket 0352?
Docket number 0352. The Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, to which was referred on February 24, 2021. Docket number 0352. Petition of a Yankee line for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. Submits a report recommending that the petition ought to be denied.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Ed Flynn, Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Chair Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a petition from Yankee Line to establish a bus line from 313 Congress Street, which is across from the Children's Museum, to the South Shore between 5:00 and 10:00 departures a day. This would mainly serve the South Boston waterfront area to the South Shore. We had a hearing on this petition back in February, and at the hearing, we understand that this petition still has some work to do, including more community outreach to the neighborhood groups and residents about the proposal, to gather feedback, as well as some safety and traffic congestion concerns from BTD and the Boston Police Department. We asked the petitioner to provide us with more information, as well as to work on these issues that I already mentioned. The petitioner has not submitted the required documents yet, so we recommend that we deny this without prejudice, and the petitioner can come back and refile this if they choose.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Ed Flynn, Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs, seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the petition ought to be denied. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has, the report has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read dockets 0828 through 0830?
Docket number 0828. The Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, to which was referred on June 30, 2021. Docket number 0828. Petition of We Drive You Incorporated for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. Submits a report recommending that the petition ought to be placed on file. Docket number 0829. The Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, to which was referred on June 30, 2021. Docket number 0829. Petition of We Drive You Incorporated for a license to operate vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. Submits a report recommending that the petition ought to be placed on file. And docket number 0830. The Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, to which was referred on June 30, 2021. Docket number 0830. Petition of We Drive You Incorporated for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. Submits a report recommending that petition ought to be placed on file.
The Chair now once again recognizes Counselor Ed Flynn, Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, Veterans and Military Affairs. Chair Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I speak on those three dockets at the same time?
You sure may. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dockets 0828, 0829, and 0830 are also jitney petitions from We Drive You. The petitioner has decided to withdraw their petition and is no longer seeking a license to operate these routes. I recommend that we place these dockets on file. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion on dockets 828, 829, or 830? Seeing none, Counselor Ed Flynn, Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that dockets 828, 829, and 830 be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read docket 0296?
Docket number 0296. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 3, 2021. Docket number 0296. Petition for a special law relative to an act, an act relative to the Boston Landmarks Commission submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Chair Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. The committee held a hearing on February 8, as well as working sessions on February 18 and September 8, 2021. This docket would amend Section 2 of Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975, basically our landmark defining law of the state of Massachusetts. It would allow for local resources to have historical significance in the community to be designated as landmarks. Right now, it essentially requires a certain significance at a state level beyond our local hearts and minds and significance, and this would allow for us on the ground in our neighborhoods to really identify things that mean something special to us as a landmark. We had a really good hearing, a lot of which was more concerned about whether this could be used as a defensive tool to stop development. In reality, we wanted to make sure it was a proactive tool to really celebrate our diversity, celebrate what makes each one of our neighborhoods a little different, and to acknowledge that diversity, and to really encourage people on the ground to be part of that conversation celebrating our history. I just wanted to note who, some folks who came out to testify, and I apologize for not noting, this was led by our Counselor Bach, and I want to appreciate her. Not only did she lead this, but she also came up with a compromise legislation that I think everyone could come together on, saying we're going to be able to value our neighborhoods and also still grow our neighborhoods. But just calling out some people who came and testified at all of the hearings, Col Specter, the Environment Commissioner, Roseanne Foley, Executive Director of the Landmarks Commission, Lynn Smillage, who is Chair of the Landmarks Commission as well. I also want to thank Greg Vassal from the Greater Boston Real Estate Board, Adam Hunley as well from the Greater Boston Real Estate Board, Paul Stanky from the Director of Preservation Alliance for Greater Philadelphia came over to explain some of their landmarks processes, and of course Greg Gaylor, Executive Director of the Boston Preservation Alliance. I'm going to turn this now over to Counselor Bach, but I do recommend that we pass this matter. I think we've had robust conversation, and this is a perfect balance of preserving, but also, and celebrating and growing our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair now recognizes the District Councilman Beacon Hill, Counselor Kenzie Bach. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, Chairwoman Edwards. She summarized it well, but, you know, I think a number of colleagues were at our initial hearing, and one of the balances that we really wanted to strike was, this is not aimed at being a sort of cudgel to block development. It is a question of giving Boston the right to protect its history in the way that frankly every other major city that we talked to in the states, and also as close as across the river in Cambridge, is able to do. So it's just making that significance level for landmarks able to be related to local stuff. And it was really great to be able to work with both our Gregs, Greg Vassal on the Real Estate Board side, and Gaylor on the Preservation Alliance side, to think about, you know, how do we do this in a way that's meaningful, but that also doesn't penalize sort of projects that are currently underway and put them into any kind of like double jeopardy kind of situation where they thought that they were operating under one set of rules and then it shifted. And so we did end up kind of coming up with a compromise that will ensure that projects that are already in the process in various ways are not sort of suddenly being subjected to a different standard on the landmarks front. And I'm pleased that at our last working session, all the stakeholders expressed that they were comfortable with where we had landed. So this is definitely one of those, like, the legislative process, it actually works sort of things. And obviously, the next step will be to go up to the State House, but I would be very grateful if colleagues would support this today, and I think it's a reasonable step to take to just make sure that we can, we in Boston, when we know something's really significant to us, have all the tools at our disposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bach, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Docket 0296, seeing no takers. Counselor Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, and Counselor Bach, the lead sponsor, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0296 in a new draft. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Congratulations. I might now like to ask Counselor Baker to please take over the rostrum for docket. But as he does that, Mr. Clerk, could you read docket 0441?
Docket number 0441. Counselor Edwards and Wu offered the following. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 17, 2021. Docket number 0441. Ordinance relative to the investments of the city treasury. Submits a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Just turned you on, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards for the Chair of Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. It's very, I'm very excited as the Chair, but also as one of the lead sponsors of this ordinance, to put our money where our mouths are. This ordinance, as we've stated many times, a budget is a statement of our values, and also where we invest our money is a statement of our priorities. And this is following the rich history of this city of saying, we will not invest in things that are not helpful, that bring about a more equitable future, and now today, don't bring about a more green future and infrastructure that we need. Currently, the Treasury oversees about $2 billion in investment. More than one-third already is managed by the state, leaving about $1.3 billion for the city of Boston's complete discretion. And so currently, the city of Boston is already investing more than 10% in environmental social governance. However, this is doing more than that. This is saying we will no longer invest in fossil fuels and infrastructure, and I'm very excited about that. This also gives a realistic timeline for this to happen by 2025, and we estimate right now, it's about $65 million that'll be moved immediately from fossil fuels. Now, this is different from the retirement divestment hearings we've had, and I want to make that very clear. These are our trust funds. These are not our retirement funds. These are funds that have people donated to the city of Boston for investment, brown funds, all of those different things. So it does not impact state law, and it does not impact people who may be looking to retire, and whether the return on the investment is as high. This goes to what we have the absolute discretion on, and that's why it's so important we act today. I'm beyond excited because this is, this is along the lines that we've done with South Africa. This is the same legislation we did it when it came to tobacco products. So adding in the list of things we are no longer going to be investing in is now fossil fuels with these funds. This law already exists. This is now adding a different condition, as well as prisons, that's also added in the law, or before this. So I'm excited. I hope you guys will also understand that this is, this requires your action, and I hope that you will support this. I'm beyond excited that this is filed with Counselor Wu, and the other co-sponsor was Counselor O'Malley. And I think that this is something that I have to say is part of your legacy, Counselor O'Malley. When we look to Berto, we'll be looking to you, and when we look to divesting, and again, I won't steal your tagline, but it has to do with fiscal stewardship being in green infrastructure. But I want to say thank you so much for inspiring, for pushing, and supporting this as well. So I hope that, I recommend that we vote and pass this, and I would love to turn this over now to my co-sponsor.
Chair recognizes the co-sponsor, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Chair, for your great partnership and kind words. I will be brief. It's, it's not only the right thing to do as we talk about investment or divestment, but also we do have a dutyary responsibility to our pensioners, to our taxpayers, and the fact of the matter is, is that the Dow Jones Sustainability Index far outperforms Dow Jones Average. This is not only good for the planet, but it is good for our bottom line, and it's really exciting when those two notions converge. Every fiscal conservative should be environmentalist. I've said it time and time again, and here's proof positive of that. So this is something that, incredibly proud for the partnership with Chair Edwards, incredibly proud for the partnership with Mayor Wu. incredibly proud for the partnership with Mayor Wu. We did our first resolution on this when she was a freshman Counselor back in 2014, and it's exciting to sort of bookend both of our careers on this body with this important step. So urge your passage. Thank you for your partnership and your leadership, particularly you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Is there anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Not seeing any. Chair Edwards and Counselor O'Malley seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 0441 in a new draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
If you can clap, let's do it. Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Chair. We are now moving right along to Docket 1023. Mr. Clerk, would you please place it before our body?
Docket Number 1023, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on September 29th, 2021, Docket Number 1023, a communication received from Susan L. Sullivan, Executive Director of New Market Business Association regarding the proposed petition for New Market Business Improvement District, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, actually, our new Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, with, of course, the Mayor's resignation. The Vice Chair has moved up. So Chair Baker, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you don't mind, I'm going to read this, this committee report, and it's a little bit lengthy, so bear with me. First, I want to acknowledge Sue Sullivan and the work that you've done in all this. Sue, I think it was about seven or eight years ago we first met with Rosemary Sansom. We were talking about the bid for New Market. The Boston City Council Committee on Planning and Development and Transportation, to which was referred the following. Docket 1023, communication was received from Sue Sullivan, Executive Director of New Market Business Association regarding the proposed petition for New Market Business Improvement District. This matter was filed with the City, with the council by the City Clerk upon filing of a petition with the City Clerk, seeking the City Council's approval for a proposed business improvement district, and was referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation on September 29th, 2021. The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation held a public hearing via Zoom on November 8th, 2021, to take testimony and consider the same. The chair read into record formal language requirements outlining by the state according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40O, which is included, which included a letter from the City Clerk stating the petition to establish the New Market Business Improvement District meets all criteria for the establishment of the bid as set forth in General Law 40O. Also, an assessor's certificate from the assessor for the City of Boston certifying that he has received and reviewed the list of fiscal year 2019 assessed real property and real property owners within the proposed New Market Business Improvement District, and that stated signatures exceeded 60% of the real property owners within the bid, and that they exceeded 51% of the assessed value of all real property within the bid. The fee structure as set forth, and also the fee structure as set forth in General Law 40O. Documents read into the record. The council, the councils, I want to first thank the councils that were present. Counselor Wu chaired, I was there, Counsel Flynn was there, Counsel Flaherty was there, Counsel Bach was there, and Counsel Mahi was there. Also in attendance were State Representative Liz Miranda, State Representative John Santiago, Suffolk County Sheriff Steve Tompkins, and Andrew Grace, the Director of Strategic Planning for the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, attended the hearing and presented testimony in favor of the petition to establish the New Market Business Improvement District. Citing their familiarity with the mission, the goals and the aspirations of this project, their long-term efforts and commitments advocating for planning and better future together with residents, leaders, property owners, business owners, organizations, and institutions in the New Market Business Association, they pledged their full support in moving this matter forward and bringing to fruition, and urged the Boston City Council to approve the petition in the New Market Business Improvement District. Also testifying in favor are Sue Sullivan, the Executive Director of New Market Business Association, Ben Murphy, the Program Manager, Ann Burke, who is a consultant for New Market and an expert on bids, also attended the hearing presenting in favor of. The components of the Business Improvement District and the enabling legislation, Chapter 40O, the community outreach, education, and partnership formation efforts, the data substantiating the well above required legal threshold to establish the New Market Business Improvement District, and the description and maps of the proposed boundaries of the New Market Business District. It also stated the missions, goals, the mission and the goal is to better, have better quality of life, increase safety and security, greater area cleanliness, improve transportation around the district, advocacy for local business, property owners and residents, and also advocacy for change in the homeless addiction crisis and the promotion of business growth. The proposed development and improvement plans for New Market Business Improvement District, and the overall associated benefits and enhanced programming services and resources and activities brought about by the establishment of the New Market Business Improvement District. And there's a copy of the whole presentation in the back. I just want to make one point about this. This is, this is services that the business community has been looking for from the city for years. This will not be a replacement of the city services. We still need to be down there full-time, city, that's Public Works, Police, Public Health, Transportation, Fire Department, we're all still there. This will augment, augment the city services that were there. It was, it will also, it will also augment a transportation plan. It will merge BU, South Bay, and I think there's one more transportation plan that will merge there and augment. So, so the people now that are trying to traverse this area will be able to get there safely and securely, and I think it will be much needed benefit, just the transportation plan. Based on the documentation, information, and testimony submitted and presented at the hearing, and have considered the same, the committee determined that the petition seeking the formation of the New Market Business Improvement District satisfies the proposed, the purposes set forth in established criteria of General Law 40O. I respectfully recommend that the City Council vote to approve the petition to establish the New Market Business Improvement District. That a roll call and vote be taken, and this matter ought to pass, signed by Michelle Wu, the committee chair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any, there is some further discussion. The Chair recognizes the District Council from South Boston on Docket 0, excuse me, 1023. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you to my colleague, Counselor Baker, for his leadership on this, but also to recognize Sue Sullivan and the work she did in the New Market area, which also overlaps into my district as well. I want to say thank you to Sue and her team for working closely with the businesses in and around the New Market, including residents and businesses in the South End as well, and engaging Steve Fox and other neighborhood organizations. It was a great working relationship that they had, and thank you to Sue and her team. We were able to get it done, and also, obviously, our colleague, Counselor Baker. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes the District Council from Mattapan. Counsel Andrea Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, thank you to Counselor Baker. I also want to thank Sue and her team, because part of this connected to some constituents in the other part of Dorchester and District 4, and she was able to navigate some of the constituent cases and concerns with respect to folks who didn't want to be in it, who thought about being in it, and did it with such grace that it all turned out really well. So thank you for really pouring in on this, and thank you again to Counselor Baker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 1023? Seeing no takers, Counsel Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, on behalf of Mayor Wu, who is the pastor media chair at the time of this hearing, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 1023. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chair, the Chair did ask for...
I was waiting for you to, you'll doubt the vote. The Chairman doubts the vote. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll call on Docket 1023? We'll note it is the opinion of the Chair that the matter has passed, but we will have a roll call on record.
Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Mahi.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes.
The matter has passed unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you all, and congratulations. Moving right along to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket 0900?
Docket Number 0900, ordinance to provide for legal representation of the Boston Groundwater Trust by the City of Boston Law Department.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want to thank my Vice Chair for taking the lead and helping me in this moment to conduct the final hearings on this. I was, Counselor Bach, of course, is the lead sponsor of this matter, pushing for making sure that our groundwater trust has legal representation, which they currently do not. So I'm going to actually turn over to the Vice Chair and/or the lead sponsor, whoever is more prepared to speak right now, to help. But my ultimate recommendation is that we pass this. I think this was an oversight that we had in our legislation, and this is something, again, Counselor Bach has found, that we need to just make sure that we are covering all aspects of city workers and people who are doing good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am quite convinced that both the Vice Chair and lead sponsor are well equipped...
equipped to speak on this and most things. So I'll start with the Vice Chair of the Committee on Government Operations.
The Chair and through the Chair. I would like to obviously recognize the lead sponsor for her great work on this, and obviously, it's something that is needed. So, through the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Chair now recognizes the District Council from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the Vice Chair for chairing, and to Counselor Edwards, as ever, for her leadership, and also to both of them for being my co-sponsors on this matter, and to Counselor Flynn for being the fourth co-sponsor, really, on this matter, and also attending the hearings. You know, I think between our districts, Counselor Flynn's, Counselor Edwards, and mine, we have the bulk of the area that the Groundwater Trust covers. And so one of the things that we all know as district counselors, and that Counselor Flaherty knows from long experience, is that the Groundwater Trust is really part and parcel of city government and of the stewardship of a critical public resource, which is the groundwater level. A public resource, I should say, with enormous impact on private property values, because we have a large number of buildings and across all of our districts that, you know, if the groundwater level lowers and the pilings that the buildings are on start to rot, it becomes a very expensive endeavor indeed to try to save them. And so it's one of those things where everyone needs to be proactive, and I think really Boston's laws around this are a model in terms of requiring groundwater recharge, requiring groundwater trusts sign off on people's plans to make sure that we don't have leaks in the system. The strange thing about all of that is that even though we rely on the trust as such a critical piece of our approvals apparatus, the way that the current city law has been interpreted by Corporation Council is that they're not actually eligible for legal representation or advice from Corporation Council because of the way that the entity is technically set up. And, you know, that exposes the volunteer members of the Groundwater Trust, who really, you know, give of themselves for the sake of the city, and its executive director, Christian Simonelli, who again is a ubiquitous presence at city meetings. And so this was something that, you know, it's not that the Law Department doesn't want to represent them, it's just that the way it currently reads the statute, it's not authorized to, and so it's an easy fix, but a really important one. And that's the piece of legislation that we have before you today, is just to make sure that if, if the Groundwater Trust finds itself embroiled in any issue, and again, when there's money on the line, as there is in development, we all know that lawsuits follow, that they can count on the City of Boston to have their back legally in the same way that they have our back as a city and, and frankly, support all the residents in these communities. So it's a, it's in the, I said to somebody, this is the category of boring but important, but I would be very grateful to everyone for their support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 0900? Seeing none, the Chair, Counselor Edwards, the Vice Chair, Counselor Flaherty, the lead sponsor, Counselor Bach, and the fourth sponsor, Counselor Flynn, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 0900. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Congratulations. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket 1181?
Docket Number 1181, Counselor Brayden offer the following. Order for a hearing regarding access to low-cost veterinary care.
The Chair recognizes the District Council from Alston Brighton. Counselor Liz Brayden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The initiative for this hearing was spurred by increasing occurrences of constituents expressing difficulty accessing affordable, low-cost veterinary care services. And while Boston has many reputable veterinary organizations providing reduced care, cost care with programs in partnership with the city's animal control, some programs are tailored to specific neighborhoods in the city. This has left low-cost, low-income residents in neighborhoods like Alston Brighton in need. We've learned from residents in public and subsidized affordable housing departments, developments having difficulty accessing low-cost veterinary care, and we also heard from residents at the BHA's Farnol Gardens, which has over 250 units, and Commonwealth Development, which has over 400 units in Brighton. At the same time, we see an increased, at the same time with increased luxury development, we've seen a proliferation of corporate boutique, upscale specialty, and subscription-based veterinary services pop up, and these businesses are unaffordable and do not meet the needs of our working-class pet owners. While demand has increased for years, pandemic shift to remote life spurred increases in pet adoptions, and simultaneously, the early pandemic conditions also forced people out of stable work or housing, leaving some pet owners unable to shelter or care for their pets and having to surrender them. In preparation for this filing, filing this hearing order, our office met with leading veterinary professionals from MSPCA, Animal Rescue League of Boston, and the Tufts Cummings School. They all expressed enthusiasm for a hearing and in partnering with the city to address low-cost veterinary care needs. The pandemic has profoundly impacted the field of veterinary care. Providers report still getting through backlogs of appointments, and pet owners are reporting, have reported difficulty scheduling appointments, appointments with long wait times. The MSPCA Angel reported in our, to our office that in, that from 2020 to 2021, they have seen a 24% increase in visits and a 32% increase in new clients. Pressures on the veterinary industry have existed well before the pandemic. There is currently a national workforce shortage, and Massachusetts is among the top 15 states with the lowest concentration of vets. The veterinary field has a low student retention rates and higher burnout turnover, and also a disproportionate rates of depression and suicide above other occupations. Pets have increasingly become integral parts of our lives and families, even improving mental health and occupational health. And as we look ahead towards a post-pandemic recovery, the city should consider adopting a holistic, one-health, human-animal care approach. We know that the health of people is connected to the health of animals and our shared environment, and this approach has been promoted by the CDC, veterinary professionals, and policy advocates. Examples of this approach would be that when we have food banks and farmers' markets, that we could integrate, including food access for pet owners. When we provide senior care services, can we incorporate education and outreach about caring for their companion animals? When we plan for housing access, can we encourage pet-friendly policies to encourage tenants who are not, so that tenants are not forced out or have limited options because they have a companion animal? Of course, in our planning, development, and zoning meetings, we also need to think about dog parks. Are we providing, are we properly educating residents on the importance of vaccines and care to prevent risk of zoonotic diseases such as Lyme disease? And we plan for disaster preparedness, are we providing relevant resources and education for pet owners? Can we broaden our city's public health approach towards healthy pets, so that healthy pets mean healthy people? This is a much-needed conversation, and I look forward to hearing from veterinary professionals, pet owners struggling to access low-cost care, and city agencies, including the Animal Care and Control and the Public Health Commission, on how to incorporate a more holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Brayden. The Chair now recognizes the District Council from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, please add my name. Thank you to Counselor Brayden for this important hearing order. I had the opportunity a month ago or so to visit the Condon Community Center in South Boston, which is located next to West Broadway Public Housing Development, BHA, and they were doing the animal control vaccinations at that site. at that site. And what I liked about it is they were reaching people that needed the service, that may have had limited funds, such as public housing residents. So I want to say thank you to Counselor Brayden for bringing that forward. It's an important discussion. And also, our pets play a critical role in the lives of families, but also veterans with PTSD, dogs are a critical role, and they're part of the family. So I just want to say thank you to Counselor Brayden for bringing this information in this hearing order forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn as a cosponsor on 1181. Any further discussion on 1181? Would any counselors wish to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Saiby George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair. In Docket 1181 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read Docket 1182?
Docket number 1182, Counselor Bach offered the following: Order relative to the adoption of classification in the City of Boston in fiscal year 2022.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Kenzie Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. I think, as all counselors know, the City of Boston's revenue is mainly based on property taxes, about three-quarters of our basis. And that's obviously very important to funding everything that we do and talk about here. And also, it's something that this body continually discusses, especially with members of our community who might be property-rich, in the sense of having a house that's appreciated in value, but be seniors on a fixed income, and otherwise, you know, have difficulty keeping up with the property taxes. And so that has been an ongoing challenge, and over time, the City of Boston has taken a number of steps to try to relieve residential taxpayers of an undue burden. And it's really a pretty proud tradition. So actually, you know, originally by the state constitution, we were only able to have one tax rate across all types of property in the city. And it was actually the voters of Boston who led an effort to amend the state constitution to allow for what's called "classification," which is the idea that you can have a different property tax rate on commercial as opposed to residential property. And it allows a certain shift of the, if you sort of imagined that everything was taxed the same, then you can shift a certain amount, such that the commercial rate is higher than the residential rate. And so that was a success of the residents of Boston. Then, again, in 2007, under the Manino administration, Boston went back to the state and successfully achieved the residential exemption, which people are probably familiar with, which exempts a certain initial amount of residential property from the taxation. So I just tell that history to say it's something that this body and the residents and leadership of Boston's been intimately involved in, because property tax law, despite the fact it's our taxes, is set at the state level. And so that classification capacity that we got ourselves a while back, we have to actually act on every year. And so the order that I have filed is in order to do that maximum shift of the burden away from our residential taxpayers and onto the commercial tax base, which is something this council has approved continuously year after year, and so which I'm coming with again. It does need to be approved by early December, so I intend, as the Chair of Ways and Means, to hold a hearing on this. But I just want people to know that I will also be aiming to move on it at the next session. And so would urge counselors who have an interest in the topic or questions and such to definitely make sure to attend that hearing in the meantime. I will just say that I know that even with our existing, even with these existing tools, we have residential taxpayers who feel significantly burdened, and it's something I know, Counselor Flynn, that we were holding working sessions about in February, March. And I think it may be that the City of Boston needs to, once again, pursue tools at the state level to make that better, because the existing programs we have don't serve enough folks. And I would just say, what's going on, in terms of why folks feel that the burden is rising, even when we make these shifts, is that assessed property values are going, are rising faster on the residential side than the commercial side. And in many respects, the pandemic sort of deepened that because of the uncertainty about sectors of the commercial real estate market. So I say all that to say, like, there's still a conversation about other tools to have. This tool, classification, is the biggest tool we have to bring relief to our residential taxpayers. And it is critical, in my view, that the city council continue our tradition of maximizing that shift. So that's what this order would do, and we'll discuss it in a hearing. But I do, Mr. President, hope to be back with a committee report on it by our next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bach. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 1182? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor to Docket 1182? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Brayden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Saiby George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair, and Docket 1182 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket 1183?
Docket number 1183, Counselor Mejia offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding the Boston Water and Sewer Commission Diversity Cultural Assessment Report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to substitute language. It was a little typo.
Fair enough. The Lead Sponsor has made a motion to substitute language, which I believe is technical in nature, seeing no objection. It is hereby amended as such. The floor is yours.
Yeah, it was not that deep. It was just a little typo. Okay. When we talk about creating opportunities for Black and Brown employees, we're not just talking about the low-down entry-level positions. We need to see Black and Brown leadership in every step of the professional ladder. For years, we have seen deep systemic inequities prevent qualified Black and Brown workers from receiving promotions and moving up in the workplace. A study concluded in 2018 found that Black professionals make up just 3.3% of all executive and senior leadership roles across the country. And here in Boston, we have an obligation to move beyond those inequities. And we can see that effort being made within the city. The Boston Water and Sewer Commission paid for a report detailing the status of diversity and culture within the commission, with the hopes of using that data to create more opportunities for employees of color throughout the ranks. And while we celebrate the intentionality of creating such a report, to our knowledge, there has not been shared with the public or with the people who helped participate in the study. We're filing the 17F request in hopes of obtaining that information. We've had the pleasure of working with a number of employees from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, and they are incredible. They work extremely hard to serve our city and to improve equity and workforce development opportunities within their commission. And we could all take a lesson from their book. I look forward to obtaining the information requested under the 17F. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Mattapan. Counselor Andrea Campbell, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank Counselor Mejia and her team for this. This has been an ongoing issue. One of my neighbors actually works currently for the Boston Water and Sewer Department. And I've been in contact with Harry and many folks over the years with getting folks in, moving people around within that department. But it's indicative, I think, of larger issues across many departments. So I appreciate trying to get the information. And then, of course, the next step is to implement changes so that folks are actually being promoted. Particularly in this department, you have folks who are dedicated for decades. And they've actually had a lot of losses in that department, folks who've had heart attacks, you know, it's tough work. So if you work really hard, you deserve to be promoted. And the women and people of color in that department have complained for years. So hopefully, with the new administration, they'll make some meaningful and substantive changes. So thank you, Counselor Mejia.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? Seeing none, Counselor Julia Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1183, which is typically what we do for 17Fs. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the 17F has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read Docket 1184?
Docket number 1184, Counselor Baker offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding Boston Public School incident reports.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Frank Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I cannot add cosponsors, Counselor Flynn and Counselor Saiby George had expressed some interest. I filed the 17F regarding incidents that have occurred at the Boston Public Schools since the beginning of the school year, because I've been made aware of some alarming incidents that have occurred in our school. Most recently, a well-respected, longtime principal and other staff were brutally assaulted by at least one, possibly multiple, students of hers. This behavior is unacceptable, especially in our schools, where we rely on the others to keep the children in a safe environment. We remove, we look to remove the school police presence from our school, but the violence continues. And I filed the 17F to get a clear understanding about what's happening across all the school districts. Since the incident that happened to, I'm going to say her name, Trish Lamparden at the Henderson School, who was taken out in an ambulance, unconscious, broken ribs, face all smashed up. Since that happened, there's been multiple other incidents that have happened. And this isn't just teachers getting hurt or whatever. This is, this is kids in school getting beat up, surrounded, bullied. And it's concerning. I went to the Henderson the day after the incident, and there was a school community there that was traumatized. There were people crying, there were people mad, there were people like, just, what are we going to do? Half of the room was, we need help breaking up fights. We need to get, and then the other half, we need to get to the core of the issue. The reality is, we need both. We need to, we need to figure out the response, the mental health response that kids and teachers need now, coming out of COVID. And we also need some sort of presence there. And I've said, and I said to the superintendent, I think we need mental health care professionals that are cross-trained in karate, dress them like Jake from State Farm. I don't particularly care what you do, but we need to do something there. It's at a critical, it's at a critical point. And again, it's about our kids here. If we don't have safety in our schools, we don't have anything. So we're doing a disservice to our kids, all of our kids, if they're not safe in that environment when they leave our homes in the morning. So with that being said, I'm also going to look into a further independent investigation as to what happened at the Henderson, because they have reason to believe that was longstanding, other forms of intimidation happening. And this wasn't just with the principal. This is multiple teachers were being intimidated, they were being harassed on social media, and threatened on social media. So I know there are some investigations going on, but I think BPS needs to do an independent investigation as to what actually happened at the Henderson. Because if people aren't familiar with the Henderson and their mission, it was started by Dr. Henderson, who went blind midway in his career. And he saw no place for kids like him that had disabilities, whether it was physical impairments or mental impairments. So the parents and the teachers, the community that was formed there, beautiful, beautiful community, by the way, that was formed there in the Henderson Lower School, they fought to allow their kids that went through that Henderson experiment. It was, it was a pilot school. They fought for their kids to be able to go to a middle school and a high school. And we fought to make sure that those Henderson kids, first, they went to the Grove of Cleveland. It wasn't great, but then they, everybody was excited because we decided to send them up to the old Woodrow Wilson. And I don't regret those decisions, but what they're doing now, it's K through zero through first grade in the lower campus, and then it's second grade is through high school in the upper campus. So kids in the second grade watch Ms. Tricia get brutally attacked, brutally attacked. I don't think that that serves anyone. So there has to be some decisions made by BPS. We talk a lot about, you know, the police not answering our questions. We spend three times as much in BPS, and they're not answering any questions. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just the beginning of my 17F here. We're looking for reports of the violence that's happening in our schools, all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. The Chair recognizes the District Counselor from Mattapan. Counselor Andrea Campbell, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank Counselor Baker. He's on a roll, and I'm following him, because he's exactly right. The Henderson is in my district, an incredible community there. I learned a great deal about the history that he talked about, meeting with many advocates, some of whom have passed on, some have moved outside of Dorchester. And a lot of parents still are concerned about the lack of transparency from BPS as to what the status of the investigation is, previous reports. Many parents have complained in the past about actually removing their children from the Henderson because of bullying and other things, that they didn't think those concerns were taken seriously. Some were not surprised by this attack, which is just really sad and distressing. There's a lot of angst in the community. And then, of course, the larger conversation is, what are the other incidents across other schools? Because there are reports, or you hear from various parents and students, that there are other incidents that have occurred, and of course, can lead to this if we don't proactively respond. And the lack of transparency from the district is an ongoing issue, but in the context of safety for children, for teachers, for staff, mental health layered upon that COVID, it is incumbent upon the district to be more than transparent, over-transparent, over-communicating with families, and that's not what they're getting. Many families learned about this incident through the Globe, or some newspaper, or online. That is absolutely unacceptable. Or a robocall, also unacceptable. There has to be a greater infrastructure setup to communicate on these issues. So fully support the 17F. Definitely wanted to speak to not just Counselor Baker, obviously tag-teaming Dorchester, but other state electives who also showed up. Brian, who's taking over my seat, also is, of course, in the weeds on this conversation too, and of course, the at-large counselors as well, but wanted to echo this conversation. It's not for lack of resources. They have all the money, like you said. It's lack of leadership, and it's a lack of intentionality, and really just saying, when we get it wrong, we get it wrong. That's okay. Now you've got to step up and do it right. That's what the parents deserve. Thank you. And the students.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Ed Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I echo what Counselor Baker and Counselor Campbell talked about, the principle of the school. I know her as Patricia Kelly from Old Haba Street. Her father is Frank Kelly, who organized the Thanksgiving meal for our seniors and persons with disabilities in South Boston and Dorchester. So the Kelly family has played a critical role in our city in educating, educating our children. But want to acknowledge the work of Counselor Baker and Counselor Campbell and Counselor Saiby George as well. We don't get the information we need from the Boston Public Schools. I wish there was a system in place, especially for district counselors, when there is an incident that takes place at a school in our district, and if the police are called, or if there is a major incident, that district counselors would be, would know about it. There's nothing more frustrating for us is to find out about something as a rumor, and then it's us chasing down the rumor to see exactly what happened. But BPS has to be more transparent, engage the residents, engage the parents, especially at schools, also engage the city council. Let us know what is happening in the schools. Be more transparent, because we have no idea what is happening in our BPS schools. And want to say thank you to Counselor Baker for taking the initiative to get this information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Nisa Saiby George.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Baker, for putting this before us until the remarks from colleagues. I would also add, and this is a more difficult thing to measure and to collect, but there is certainly a significant lack of reporting that's happening around incidents in our schools because of the challenges and the worries about putting things on paper, especially as it relates to discipline, especially as it relates to violence, especially as it relates to the challenges around reporting as it relates to our schools across the district. I also want to note that through this especially last two years, there's been a significant attack against school resource officers, school safety officers in our school buildings. And it has created this dynamic in which our schools are very much unsettled. We know that there's a great deal of need as it relates to our students, a great deal of support required by our school staff and faculty and instructors and administrators, and then certainly for those that are charged with protecting us and protecting our kids and making sure that school is a safe environment in which to learn. So I don't know how we measure that, Counselor Baker, but I think that it's really important that we get some, and I'm happy to help with some anecdotal information collected from my partners in the Boston Public Schools, because there is so much that is undocumented, there is so much that is unrecorded. And that is where I think the greater threats lie, when we talk about school safety across the district. But, you know, sign on to this, support this, and happy to do this work in partnership. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asavi George. The Chair recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester, Counsel Julia Mahia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I have an 11-year-old daughter and I'm always just incredibly at, at my wit's end of the things that she says to me have happened in her school that she's reporting to me that I have not heard. And just issues around bullying, just feeling safe or not. And so I really do applaud Counsel Baker for bringing this in terms of accountability and transparency within the Boston Public Schools. As a parent who worked in the education space, information was always hard to come by. We had to fight for everything, even working with the ombudsman, I believe, that's what it's called. Bringing them in, bringing folks in, it just always felt like we were pushing and fighting just to get access to information. And a lot of parents don't even know what their rights are. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to really lean into this conversation and hold the district accountable to not only sharing information, but also what are we going to do about it? Right? Like there's one thing, once we know what we know, it's important to know what are we going to do about it as we continue to move forward. And I also just kind of want to note two things. One is in East Boston, probably like in 2015, 2016, we were working with some parents who were really feeling unsafe around some of the discriminatory practices that were happening to some of the students. That later came to, to bear with some of the politics that happened around the young man that was deported. So I think that there's a, there's also, when we talk about this whole notion around reporting and discrimination and, and, and safety, that the conversation needs to include parents who are also feeling neglected in, in this process. And so I just want to uplift that piece. And then the other, the other thing is that in terms of moving forward, I am encouraged by the, the, the notion that when it comes to transparency, accountability and accessibility here in the city of Boston, that we're going to lean into these difficult conversations and be unapologetic and relentless in, in what accountability really looks like moving forward. So thank you, Counsel Baker, for putting this forth, and I look forward to the information that comes about.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes the at-large Counsel from South Boston, Counsel Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and concur and I'd like to thank the lead sponsor for his leadership on this. And I too, obviously, know Tricia very well. I know Tricia served side by side with our future colleague, Counsel-elect Aaron Murphy at the Murphy School, teaching my kids. So I know that Aaron knows her very well and personally, I think they shared maybe the kindergarten or second grade together. But horrendous incident, and it's not isolated just to the Henderson. So time has come for BPS to come forward and describe that. There is no excuse for violence in any form in our city and in our schools. COVID's not an excuse. Having a bad day at the office is not an excuse. Getting a bad grade's not an excuse. There's no excuse for violence in our city and in our schools. And so we're also learning or hearing rumors that teachers aren't allowed apparently to call 911, which is absolutely absurd, if there is an emergency. And whether you need blue lights, whether you need red lights or you need orange lights, whatever that situation is, you should feel free to be able to call 911 and get emergency assistance immediately in, in, in a classroom, in a neighborhood, at City Hall, wherever it is. And so if that is true, if teachers are being instructed that they cannot call 911, I'm told that the 911 call in this instance came from students' phones. It got that bad. And so I think that needs to be a line of inquiry as well. I think the question here to, to the 17F is that what incidents required a police or 911 response and/or which did not require a 911 response? I guess the question is, which one did require a 911 response, but people were afraid and were told that they couldn't call 911? And again, that's, that goes right to the root of the absurdity of the situation. And it's why things spiraled out of control in this instance or in other schools. So look forward to getting that information and, and any follow-up action or hearing that, that the lead sponsor will, will pursue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And for the final word, if no one else wishes to speak, the Chair recognizes the author of the 17F, Counsel Frank Baker. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make one more point that I think, and the 17F is about the whole district, but I'm, I'm focused on the, the Henderson lower campus in my district, upper campus in, in, in Andrea's, in Andrea's district. I think we need to reexamine the mission of the school and see how we support those people in there. What's, what, maybe it's time to break that school up and do two separate schools. But also I have a, a standing meeting with parents and all their kids are non-verbal. So they can't express what's going on. And the parents, they live in Boston and this is their only option. So just, just to add a little, another layer of urgency on, on this, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak again.
Well said and important notes, so thank you. So obviously, as has been noted, a 17F can only be a response to one counselor, but there is clear, I would say, all of us are very, very interested in this, so I appreciate your work. The author of the 17F, Counsel Frank Baker, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1184. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the order has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read Docket 1185?
Docket number 1185, Counsel Abraiden offer the following: Resolution opposing the proposed relocation of the Herter Community Garden.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton, Counsel Liz Abraiden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Herter Community, the Herter Community Garden was founded in 1976 along the banks of the Charles River in Alston-Brighton, 60-acre Christian A. Herter Park. It's, it's DCR land, but this is a, this is a very treasured location in, in our neighborhood. We have very few community gardens in Alston-Brighton, and this is one that has been established a long time ago. It is a vital resource and gathering space for local community members for over 45 years, providing access to organic gardening space for a multi-generational community that includes seniors, immigrants and residents of color from surrounding neighborhoods who rely on the garden for food security, sociability and support networks. It has been so successful that there is a four-year waiting list for, for one of the garden 70 plots. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, announced its intent to remove and relocate the community garden from its current site, which has been met with fierce opposition, as you can imagine, among the community, and a petition has garnered over 2,300 signatures. Relocation of the garden has been deemed infeasible as it would result in the loss of 45 years of community labor and organic soil enrichment. This area has previously been an industrial space with, and it's, and those who are familiar with organic gardening, it takes years to amend the soil and to make it truly an organic garden. And the site is proposed, the site of the proposed garden's relocation is poorly situated for cultivation. I urge my council college, colleagues to join me in opposing DCR's plans to relocate the community garden and to work with community members to plan for its future. I move, move to seek suspension of the rules in passage of this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Abraiden. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 1185? Seeing no takers, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor of Docket 1185? Madam, Mr. Clerk, excuse me, please add Counsel Royo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asavi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mahia. Please add the Chair's name. And Counsel Liz Abraiden seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1185. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Congratulations, Counsel Abraiden. Mr. Clerk, would you now please read Docket 1186?
Docket number 1186, Counselors Abraiden and Mahia offer the following: Resolution recognizing November 20th as Transgender Day of Remembrance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton, Counsel Liz Abraiden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This Saturday, November 20th, is Transgender Day of Remembrance, which has been observed annually since 1999 to commemorate and honor the life of Rita Hester, a black trans woman killed in Alston in 1998. The community's vigil and memorialization of Rita has sparked efforts bringing urgent attention to the epidemic of deadly violence against transgender people, the majority of whom have been Black and Latinx trans women of color. Despite Rita's influential legacy on, in the LGBTQIA+ community, she has not been commemorated by the city as a whole. It was her death that precipitated the, the actual establishment of a Trans Day of Remembrance. Now, 23 years after her murder, the city, through the Office of Arts and Culture, is conducting a call for artists, to artists for proposals for a mural, a mural in Alston memorializing her life and legacy. Of course, we must recognize that a mural alone is insufficient in protecting the lives and meeting the immediate needs of Boston's transgender and non-binary communities amidst an ongoing epidemic of violence. And much more must be done to better serve and protect their lives. In 2021, 2021 has already been the deadliest year on record in the country with at least 45 transgender or gender non-conforming people fatally killed or shot, shot or killed, including Jaharia Delato of Boston and Western Massachusetts. However, the true scale of violence is unknown, as incidents are often unreported and misreported. And there's a severe lack of adequate data of the social impacts on trans folk. This brings to light how essential it is for policymakers such as ourselves to implement equitable practices, including sexual orientation and gender identity data, to better understand and address challenges, the challenges faced by our transgender neighbors. On Transgender Remembrance Day and every day, we must commit to both memorialize lives violently taken and enacting measures to stop endemic transphobic violence in order to protect all of our communities. I would like to yield to my cosponsor, Julia Mahia, and then move to seek suspension of the rules in passage of this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Abraiden. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester, Counsel Julia Mahia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counsel Abraiden for allowing us to be a cosponsor of this resolution. We've been observing Transgender Day of Remembrance since 1999, and after 22 years, we have to start asking ourselves, is remembrance enough? Does simply being aware that trans community is out here meet the moment when it comes to the issues that are impacting them day after day? Let's not forget that the whole reason we have a Transgender Day of Remembrance is because a black trans woman was murdered in our city. That happened here. And 23 years after Rita Hester's murder, we are living in a, in the deadliest year of, on record for trans people in our country. So we have to start asking ourselves, is remembrance enough? We need to be moving beyond the conversation and start putting our money where our mouth is. The Transgender Emergency Fund has been looking for a space to accommodate their transitional housing project for well over a year. I know Counsel Campbell's office has been working with them, as several others, including ours, our office, but we need to come together as counselors and in partnership with our new mayor to make this space happen. We can't wait any longer for the drip, drip of progress we've been becoming so used to. We need to step up and meet the moment so that this time next year, we can be in a better place than we are now. Thank you again to Counsel Abraiden for your amazing work in this space, and I thank my colleagues for voting in favor of this resolution.
Thank you very much, Counsel Mahia. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 1186? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor before we vote? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Royo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asavi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn. Please add the Chair. And Counselors Abraiden and Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1186. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. Moving on now to personnel orders. Excuse me, I'm sorry, the Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton?
No.
Excuse me, from Beacon Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to ask for reconsideration and ask that my name be added on Docket 1185.
It was authored by the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton, so that was my, my kismet. Does anyone seek objections to Counsel Bach's suspension of the rules and reconsideration of 1185? Seeing none, I assume it is to add your name as a cosponsor. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bach as a cosponsor of Docket 1185. We are now, the Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton, Counsel Abraiden. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, which committee was Docket number 1181 referred to? The veterinary care one?
Public Health.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course. All right, we are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket 1187?
Docket number 1187, Counsel O'Malley offer the following:
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1187. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, 1188?
Docket number 1188, Counsel O'Malley offer the following:
Chair's move suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1188. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the order has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 1189?
Docket number 1189, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Mahia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1189. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Docket 1191, 90, rather?
Docket number 1190, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Baker.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1190. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. 1191?
Docket number 1191, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Asavi George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1191. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. And 1192?
Docket number 1192, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Flynn.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 1192. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. We are now moving on to late-file matters. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters. A letter from the Council President, a message from the mayor regarding Better Bus Initiative, and a late-file matter from the, from the Election Department regarding early voting. Is there any opposition to adding these three late-file matters to the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the first late-file matter into the record?
Notification from City Council President, Kim Janey. Dear Madam Clerk, having concluded my tenure as mayor of the, of the great city of Boston, I am now taking some much-needed time to rest. I am traveling over the next several weeks and therefore I am not able to attend today's city council meeting. Vice President O'Malley will preside over the meeting and my staff will be in attendance to take notes. Kindly read this letter into the record. Thank you. Sincerely, Kim Janey, Council President, District 7.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The first late-file matter will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you read the first and last paragraphs of the second late-file matter?
To the City Council, dear councilors, I hereby transmit for your approval in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $8 million in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury to be administered by the city of Boston's Chief Financial Officer, Collector, Treasurer. Be it further ordered that the mayor acting on behalf of the city of Boston is hereby authorized pursuant to Section 53A of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws to accept and expend the United States Department of the Treasury payments to state, local and tribal governments, not to exceed the amount of $8 million for the following purposes. One, to serve the communities and families most affected by the public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, including disproportionately impacted low-income families and communities of color impacted by exacerbated systemic health and economic inequities, in an amount not to exceed $8 million, including but not limited to the expansion of the Fair Free Transit Program.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just to be clear, everyone has a copy of this, correct? Is there anyone missing one? Great, okay. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on COVID, Boston's COVID-19 Recovery, the at-large Counsel from South Boston, Counsel Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm rising to ask the body to suspend and pass this docket. This $8 million ARPA fund would pay for the 28, the 23, the 28 and the 29 bus line for the next two years, starting in 2022. It's one of the issues that I heard across the city during the course of the campaign and across the entire MBTA system. The overall bus subway ridership was at 53% pre-pandemic during the weekday of ridership. On the Pilot Fair, which was the Pilot Fair Free 28 bus line, it saw ridership surge to 92% pre-pandemic levels, making it the most popular line in the system. The 23 bus line, for those that do not know, it's Ashmont to Dorchester Center, Grove Hall to Ruggles. And the 28 bus line is Mattapan Square, up Blue Hill Ave, to Dubian Square and Ruggles. And the 29 bus line is Mattapan Square, up Blue Hill Ave to Jackson Square, each serving high- each serving high-volume ridership, and each intersects with Blue Hill Ave, which, as we all know, has been identified by Livable Streets Alliance as one of the corridors that should be prioritized for improvements to increase reliability and to boost its ridership. This two-year investment will allow the city to measure the benefits of fare-free bus service, such as the increased ridership, faster buses and less traffic, as well as business district development along the route. And as chair of COVID-19 Committee, it's consistent with the same broad goals of the ARPA fund, supporting immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses and addressing systemic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the unequal impact of pandemic on certain populations. And as mentioned, this is one of the most popular issues that we've talked about and discussed, and a great opportunity for our council. And quite frankly, with the holiday break coming up, we'd really love to get this in motion, no pun intended, but for the folks that live in and around those areas having access to this transportation, safe and affordable, or at least in this instance, free transportation to get them to the downtown, to get them to economic opportunity, to get them to school, to get them to the healthcare options, this makes a lot of sense at this time. So without further ado, through the chair, we'd like to move for suspension and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Flaherty. I just want to make sure, I hope I have this in order, but the chair now recognizes the district council from Beacon Hill. Councilor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to voice my support for the chair's motion to suspend and pass today. I know that this is out of the usual order, but I do think, a couple of things. I think that it is important for people to see that government can be responsive to, you know, when voices are raised considerably on an issue. And I think that the issue of public transit and the citizens of Boston saying loud and clear that they want public transit to be something that we invest in, that we celebrate, that we drive ridership on, is, has come through really clearly in the election. And I think there's an opportunity here to move more swiftly than we usually do. I also am a big believer personally that, that in the conversation about all of this, often, like, the sort of unknown is, well, what would happen if you made things free? And I think we saw with the pilot under Mayor Janey, just the fact that, yeah, it drives ridership. And one of the things that's important to me here is the idea that you would have a sort of network nexus where people could have, people who didn't live right on the 128 line could actually connect into that. And it would be for two years, long enough to really change people's commuting patterns, give people that reliability. And it matters, not for nothing, to me that even though it's not in my neck of the woods, that the Boston Housing Authority folks are being served as well, and that one of the lines is particularly focused on that. So, yeah, I just, I think that we talk a lot about democratic mandates and people speaking, and I think this is one of the things where the city has an opportunity to say to the state, which operates this system that we all care so much about, hey, you know, when you double down on this, it changes people's lives in a really positive way and shows the support that can come for the system. So I just wanted to express, because I know it's out of our regular order, the fact that I support the chairman and his motion for the suspension and passage today.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bach. The chair recognizes the district council from Mattapan. Councilor Andrea Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. And I've been on record, I fully support buses being free, and I really support this effort as well. And I applaud Mayor Wu for jump-starting this and getting us off the ground. I object, though, to the suspension of the rules in passage of this today as a late file for two reasons. One, I do think that residents should have an opportunity to weigh in, and particularly those who are not getting their bus line made free. I'm happy that these particular lines were picked. Most of them are in my district. I think it is an equity issue. But I think people should have an opportunity to weigh in because it also connects to the COVID dollars. But the second piece is, during the course of some of the conversations related to the campaign, it was made clear that our previous mayor overpaid for the 28, including by our current mayor. So I do think we need to have a conversation about, well, overpaid what? How much more did the city invest in this than they needed to, to get this done? And I think that's a legitimate question, just on the dollars. And so I do think it's worth having a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. So just to be clear, Councilor Campbell has objected to the suspension of the rules in the late-file matter, which means we will not take action, but debate on this will continue. So the chair recognizes the district council from Alston Brighton. Councilor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, you know, the issue of public transit is critical to, it's the lifeblood of our city, and so many of our essential workers and residents across all of our districts rely on robust public transit. And I'm really, I welcome this initiative. I think it's wonderful that we have free fare for these bus lines specifically. I think it has public health implications. But I really urge us, as we can move forward into a new session of the city council, that we raise up the issue of public transit access across our city. In our district, we have the 65 bus line, the bus route. It goes from Brighton Center across through Longwood down to Kenmore. It passes a huge number of public housing, Commonwealth housing, 9195 Washington Street, and senior housing along that, Patricia White Apartments. These residents are folks with disabilities, elders, retired, low-income residents. They rely on public transit. Yet that bus does not run at all on a Sunday. It runs once in an hour on a Saturday. And it's, there's huge inequity there. And I really hope that we can have a really critical and robust conversation with the MBTA, and it's long past time that they deliver a proper, a good service for our residents in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Excuse me, the chair recognizes the district council from East Boston. Councilor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And I was hoping that we would suspend and pass, because I feel there's a sense of urgency to get this transportation going and moving. And I think that so much of our post-recovery is about how people move. And we did see that these particular communities and these particular bus lines are vital to parts of our city being able to be connected to all sorts of things. The fact is that, I mean, we don't need to go through why it should be, why it should be free. It's a question of why it should happen now versus the hearing. And my argument would simply be, you can have both. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. This is not a permanent program we're thinking about. This is a continuation of the pilot programs to fund free buses, and we're picking specific geographic areas, I think, and honestly, to learn, to see. Good that we learned that we overpaid, but doesn't mean that we can't implement those lessons right now as we're going through and designing and moving this program. I don't see this as the absolute. I see this as meeting the moment and also putting money in and making sure people are moving. And yes, there are still lessons to be learned. A lot of the lessons we're going to learn are going to be years from now, anyway, if this ever were to become part of our permanent structure. We do have the funds now. We have the urgency now. And so I would hope that we can move people. And honestly, we do, thanks to your leadership with the Post Audit Committee and moving and making sure that we are constantly assessing how our money is moving and how it isn't, we can have that continued conversation and should, as this body. I agree, I mean, $8 million is a lot to just simply say, move someplace else. But we do know that a free bus works. We do know this. We see it working right now, and it does help communities of color, low-income communities of color, get connected to work. Ninety-two percent of, 92% increase, or, excuse me, ridership is a huge, huge jump in the pandemic. I would want to see that sense of urgency and having that funded, and since the funds are here, to move that along. I think we, if the urgency is there, there is a possibility of having that hearing and that conversation. But I don't think we can have enough conversations in order for us to truly inform an absolute kind of perfected program in this moment. I think that the conversations need to be happening as it's going. I would want to know why the 111 isn't on there, too. There's a bus that comes up the vein of East Boston that I would love to see also part of this. But I don't want to have the conversation about why it's not there ahead of or in preventing the allocation of these funds to these other bus lines right now. I think we could do both. I think everything that Council Andrea suggested that we be talking about, we should be talking about. But I also think we can talk about it and also fund this program right now. But it is objected to. It is, the funding will not be going through. But I just wanted to voice that.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. The chair recognizes the district council from South Boston. Councilor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the mayor and the council for their work on this important issue. I was coming out of the building, the city council, several weeks ago, and I was walking towards the green line. And a gentleman sitting on the stairs said, hey, Council Flynn, do you have a couple bucks on you? He was a homeless guy. And I figured he wanted a coffee or a donut or something. And I said, yeah, what do you need the money for? He says, well, I need money to go to the VA. I have to take the E-line train, the green line, from Government Senate to Jamaica Plain. Matt knows very well. But this disabled veteran, who was a Vietnam veteran, who lives at Court Street, New England Center for Homeless Veterans, he didn't have the money to get to his medical appointment. I think it was a drug counseling session that he was going to. So I ended up talking to him, gave him a couple bucks. But, you know, the role of government in supporting people that need our help, such as the disabled, or veterans, or seniors, communities of color. But people rely on the MBTA to get to needed places, such as their medical appointments. It might be the VA, it might be the Health Center in Dorchester, or in South Boston, or in East Boston. But the more we can do in getting our residents safely to medical appointments for free is something that we need to continue to work on. And I hope I can continue working with our colleagues and the mayor going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Does anyone who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak before we go back to the chair? Okay, the chair now calls on the at-large council from South Boston, Councilor Michael Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. And through the chair, to obviously to our colleague, the objective, she would reconsider, reconsidering just in light of the comments from our colleagues, as well as a commitment, maybe through our Transportation Committee, to address the issues and concerns very valid on her front that we could have simultaneously as we're able to advance these ARPA funds. That's one of the critiques that we're getting is that, from the public, we're not, these funds are not getting out there. They're not hitting the street quick enough. We have a great opportunity here in front of us. I just don't want to squander that. But through the chair, if the objective would reconsider, and then I'll pledge to work with her to have a hearing immediately.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the district council from Mattapan. You heard the request?
I want to make it crystal clear. I'm for this. I think it's a great idea. I think all the T-lines, bus T-lines should be absolutely free in the city of Boston. I'm absolutely for these particular lines. They sit within my district. It's an equity issue. Thank you to Mayor Wu and the team for starting with these lines. The two questions on the table is, one, it was admitted that the previous administration overpaid for that pilot. How much? By how much? We should all, as fiscal stewards, want an answer to that. Does this overpay as well? I have concerns. That's a legitimate question, and I think should be addressed during a hearing where we can, of course, make that public. The second, in that same hearing, it's an opportunity for residents to weigh in, if they so choose, about why this is great, their line. It creates the space. This hearing could happen this week or next week. I'm not trying to delay this. Do it as quickly as possible. But that's a legitimate question as fiscal stewards. We should all be asking that, especially because it's now a matter of public record that it was overpaid for. This is not to suggest that this is being overpaid for, but until we have an answer to that, I do think that we should wait and then get this done, maybe next week or the next council meeting. I absolutely think we can do this before the next council meeting to get these funds out the door for those particular lines. I want to make that crystal clear. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council Campbell. So I think to the request, that was answered your question. So seeing no more discussion on this second late-file matter, the second late-file matter will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. And just to be clear, there is obviously no meeting next Wednesday for the Thanksgiving holiday. There is one two weeks from now. So to the point, a hearing could be held next week, and then action on the 1st of December. Mr. Clerk, would you please now read the first and last paragraph of the third late-file matter?
Notification from Boston Election Department to the city council. Dear councilors, as the local election official for the city of Boston, Dear councilors, as the local election official for the city of Boston, I request and recommend that the city hold in-person early voting for the December 14, 2021 special state primary for the First Suffolk and Middlesex Senate District. I make this request in accordance with the provisions of Section 1 of Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020, as further amended by Chapter 29 of the Acts of 2021. That statute provides a local option to allow in-person early voting for elections held on or before December 15, 2021. The Elections Department is prepared to administer early voting. I respectfully request that your honorable body authorize in-person early voting for the December 14, 2021 special state primary on the dates and times listed in the order. Pursuant to Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020, your body must vote to authorize in-person early voting no later than November 29, 2021. Therefore, for the convenience of your honorable body, I have attached to this letter a proposed vote that would authorize in-person early voting as requested. Sincerely, Anita Tavira, Chair, Board of Election Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just again, to be clear, everyone should have this paper in front of them, which includes the verbiage and the locations for this proposal. For what purpose does the district council from Beacon Hill rise?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As the member of this body who votes in the district in question and is not running for this election, I wanted to make a motion today to suspend and pass the, the voted language that's on the last page of this. And I'll do that formally in a second, Mr. President. But I just wanted to speak to, I think folks saw in the, I think in the Globe today, they were writing about the fact that early voting and expanded mail-in balloting, we don't, we don't currently have an expansion for past December 15th. And that's an issue that I think is urgent and I, I know that we passed courtesy of Councilor Royo some home rules around that for the city of Boston. We, we're not there yet. However, fortunately, the next special election in the city of Boston is on December 14th, the day before that. And so is eligible for these pandemic expanded voting opportunities. And I will just say, I, you know, I represent Beacon Hill, which is in this district that has a senate vacancy. Also in the district is in Counselor Flynn's district downtown Chinatown and Bay Village and Counselor Edwards' district, East Boston, and then the district extends beyond Boston. But what I have heard loud and clear from the folks who I represent who live in this district is that they want to be able to have the convenience of early voting. And it's one of the ways that in the midst of the holiday season, like, we're going to get them to actually show up and vote. And I think that unfortunately, traditionally, the city of Boston has not always had the same turnout as other cities and towns that we're lumped in with in these kinds of specials. And I don't think that's good for the political voice and power of the city. So it's super important to me that everybody be as enfranchised as possible in the district. And so I think obviously that we take advantage of the early voting powers is critical and this is the last meeting before the deadline for authorizing those. So that's why the suspension and passage. I did just want to note, if, if councilors turn to the last page of the packet, they will see the dates and times and I'll read them into the record in a moment just to sort of formally make the motion. But I would just note where it says neighborhood sites, the election commissions communicated to me that for sure there would be a, a neighborhood site in Chinatown, likely either at the YMCA or the Quincy School, and that there would be one in East Boston, likely at the BCYF. They're just nailing down the exact locations, but that both those neighborhoods would be represented, knowing that one of the core early vote sites is City Hall, which serves both the neighborhoods of Beacon Hill and, and the North End, which I neglected to mention earlier, the North Ends in the district as well, very conveniently. So just really would like to see this happen today so that it can happen at all. And, Mr. President, perhaps, actually, since I see others wishing to speak, I'll wait and make the formal motion after.
Of course. Thank you. The chair recognizes the, thank you, Councilor Bach. The chair recognizes the district council from South Boston. Councilor Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also agree with the proposal from the Election Department and support it 100%, although I do wish they brought it to us sooner. I don't, I don't think it was necessary to wait this long, but certainly I support it 1,000%. They should have engaged me and my constituents sooner on this election, educating them about the upcoming election. I have, we have a responsibility to educate our constituents, not just in English, in other languages as well, including Cantonese and Mandarin and Spanish. So I think we, we can do a better job of communicating with residents going forward. Let's use this, let's use this as an example of not waiting to the last minute to, to engage the public. So I support it, but I, as you probably can tell, I'm a little frustrated that we're waiting to the last minute on, on this. This election is, you know, elections are critical, but they're also critical for making sure that residents that don't speak English also have equal access to the ballot box. So that's my top concern, representing, representing Chinatown, representing the South End with the large immigrant community as well. So those are, those are my comments. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving me a couple minutes to speak.
Of course. Thank you, Councilor Flynn. The chair now recognizes the at-large council from South Boston. Councilor Flaherty, the floor is yours.
And just to follow up a, sort of the, the vote and mail, because there were situations in this past election where folks had requested mail-in ballots and they never received them. And I've got a whole host of affidavits from folks who contacted the Election Department, filled out the information, and they were never mailed that ballot. They were actually mailed a ballot, but the ballot never received it. That was a, that was a, an issue with, with postal delivery. And so someone still needs to answer those questions as to why folks in the city requested ballots and did not receive them. The Election Department contends that they did their job, they received the information, and they immediately turned a ballot around and they confirmed that. There were situations where the Election Department had to mail out second ballots because folks contacted them in a timely manner that didn't receive it. So that's obviously on record as well. But then since the election, I've received calls and emails from folks who actually had requested an email ballot, didn't receive it. The cure, because it was so late in the process, was that they had to go old school to a polling location to vote. And so those are instances that have been documented. So moving forward with any election, frankly, if someone requests a mail-in ballot, there needs to be some mechanism by which if a certain date comes and you still have not received your mail-in ballot, you have to go on the assumption that it's not coming, that it's, and the, the, the box that they checked was failed delivery. So we have instances where there was failed delivery that should never happen in any election. So clearly, as we're working our way through this and we're doing more of elections and hopefully we'll, we will, I guess, perfect it at some point. But for those that are listening, if you had requested a mail-in ballot and you never received it, feel free to contact the Election Department in advance of the next election, which will obviously be this election that we have here in the First Suffolk Middlesex Senate District. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Just to be clear, there are important issues raised. This is specifically on early voting and, and action needs to be taken today at these early voting sites. So yield the floor now to the district council from Beacon Hill for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Resident. I motion to suspend and pass the following order, voted pursuant to Section L of Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020, as amended by Chapter 29 of the Acts of 2021, and upon the recommendation and request of the local election official, in-person early voting is hereby approved for the December 14, 2021 special state primary for the First Suffolk and Middlesex Senate District on the following dates and times. Saturday, December 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at City Hall and at neighborhood sites to include East Boston and Chinatown. Monday, December 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. Tuesday, December 7th, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall and 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at neighborhood sites. Wednesday, December 8th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. Thursday, December 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall and 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at neighborhood sites. And Friday, December 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at City Hall.
So there is a motion. You heard it and you have a copy of it in front of you. I need a second on that motion. Councilor Flynn seconds it. The motion before us right now is the Bach-seconded Flynn motion on early voting. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is hereby adopted. Thank you all and go vote, those who live in the district. We're now moving on to the green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? You may do so at this time. Seeing no takers, we will move on to the consent agenda. I would urge colleagues though, we have three more meetings after today, so if there's things you want to get off the green sheets, I'd urge you to do so soon. Consent agenda, is there, I've been informed by Mr. Clerk that there are zero additions to the late, to the consent agenda. Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now moving on to announcements. Would anybody wish to make an announcement? The chair recognizes the district council from South Boston. Councilor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity to talk about our hearing that we had last week, November 9th, on women veterans. It was a great conversation and I want to thank Counselor Edwards for partnering with me and Counselor Braden for attending the hearing as well. This is an important issue and I just wanted to take one minute of everyone's time. I, I thought it was appropriate. The hearing was also attended by Commissioner Rob Santiago from Boston Office of Veteran Services, Roseanne Prinfani, Director of Veteran Services in the town of Winthrop, and she's also the president of the Mass Veterans Association, Carolyn Mason, who's with the Boston VA out of Jamaica Plain in West Roxbury, Meredith Chort, she's the commander of the COTAPost in Blue Hill Avenue, and also she's a member of the Organization of African-American Veterans. Women comprise nearly 20% of serving military personnel, personnel, and 10% of the veteran population today. They make up an important part of our military and our society. However, despite their contributions, women veterans often don't receive enough support. This was reflected in the testimony and statements from panelists at the hearing. They spoke about their experiences in the military and with women veterans and how discrimination and prejudice still follows women veterans and women veterans of color, whether they are in or out of the military. Panelists also spoke about the high incidence of military sexual trauma, especially among women veterans, and the need for services to address this. Panelists also spoke about the need to change the perception that veterans are only men and raise awareness that women veterans play in our, an integral part of our military and they proudly serve our country with distinction and bravery. They also have families as well and childcare and other issues are, are struggles for many women veterans. Currently, women veterans can be connected to services specifically for them by calling or texting 855-VA-WOMEN or through an online chat, woman'shealth.org, woman'shealth.vaa.gov, and they will be connected to the service providers closest to them. Women Veteran Service Offices are also the fastest growing group in the state and is, and it is required that there is at least one designated woman service provider at each VA location that can provide, can provide a comprehensive exam for women. This is important information I wanted to provide. Counselor Edwards also provided a tremendous and unique experience of women veterans, but also families of veterans as well, the critical role families play. So want to say thank you to Counselor Edwards, Counselor Braden, but there's more we need to do as a city and as a country on women veterans. And I'll continue working on this issue next year as well with, with my colleagues and thank you, Mr. President, for giving me a couple minutes.
Of course. No, thank you and, and on behalf of the entire council, thank you for your exceptional work in this space, Counselor Flynn, as well as your service to our country. The chair now recognizes the at-large council from Dorchester. Councilor Siaby George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I, I just want to, we haven't added it to the consent agenda because it just happened and we're waiting for details, but we lost a great Bostonian this last week, or last week, Jesse Stokes, who was a community member, but also a basketball coach at East Boston High School, a volunteer basketball coach. And he also touched probably thousands of young people's lives through his years coaching. I knew him as a volunteer coach and a good guy and someone who could make ribs. And so I just, I want to close in his memory today, if we could add his name, and we'll add him formally to the consent agenda next week or next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Siaby George. We will absolutely close in memory of Mr. Stokes. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston. Councilor Lydia Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And I, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Counselor Flynn had said. The hearing was incredibly powerful, especially in the testimony of the women who had come back and discussed their MST, their military sexual trauma and how common it was, including the Roseanne, who discussed how it was so poorly received and how, because she was in the police, a military police officer, the person receiving her and basically said it was her fault and she should have known how to prevent it because she was in the police. And so this is welcoming someone who had just served abroad and protecting our country and finding out that she was not deserving of protection herself in the eyes of some of her colleagues. So I just appreciated that conversation and I wanted to also thank you, Counselor Braden, for coming as well. This is part of the conversations we've had also about dealing with trauma, sexual abuse trauma and the community level and what government should do. So thank you so much for coming. I wanted to just, just address, just address our newest colleague very likely joining us, not today, but there will be a filing on December 1st. We are waiting for our newest colleague to provide a kind of clarification in writing, either from the State Ethics Commission or if she is going to continue to serve on the Boston Cannabis Board and what form. But both of those would be, I think, necessary to make sure there's no controversy, no concern about her ability to join the body. And so as a result of talking with her, she understands we will be filing the clerk's notice on December 1st so that we can then, and by then giving us enough time, her enough time to get those documents together to us to make sure that she joins the body with no controversy. So thank you so much to be Counselor at Large Alejandro Zankulyn for your understanding and making sure that process does matter, that we are consistent in our process and making sure that we are transparent as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Would anyone else wish to make an announcement? Seeing no takers, I will take the chair's prerogative and have just three brief announcements. First, I wanted to publicly thank the incredible work of central staff, specifically Yelena Valdez and Kerry Jordan of transforming this space into a remarkable scene for the swearing in of Mayor Wu yesterday. It was not easy. These tables have never been moved out and then put back in so quickly. And once again, they did tremendous work. Ron Cobb as well, just everyone on central staff did an amazing job. Secondly, you may have noticed if you were here on time, which most of you were not, that there was an iPad on your desk. Having worked with Kerry Jordan to try to, as one of my going away gifts, get rid of these needless wastes of paper, the council will soon be transitioning to iPads where we can follow along with our agenda for the meeting. It's good for the environment, good use of technology, a bit of a hiccup today, and they will be hopefully ready for our next meeting. And then very fin, very finally, to end this meeting, today marks my last time chairing this, this body. And Council President Janey will be back in this role on December 1st for our next meeting. And it's special to me to have had this opportunity. It was 11 years ago yesterday that I was elected to this body. It was a special election, November 16th, 2010. The first office I took place, which is what is now Counselor Braden's office, I had for about a month before former Councilor Ross took it from me. And it was the office that, that used to be Peggy Davis Mullins' office, the woman for whom I interned. The phone number that is now mine and has been mine for 11 years was the number that I answered as an intern. So 10 years after interning, getting elected to this body and 11 years after that, to go out as your council president pro tempore has been a true professional honor for me and I'm just grateful for your partnership, each and every one of you. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, thank you. That doesn't count as my farewell speech, by the way. Anyway, we are now, please remain standing if you are able, because we're going to adjourn our meeting in following of the, in, in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Campbell, Muriel Beasley. For Counselor Edwards, Victoria Albano. And Louis Chanka. For Counselor Siaby George, Jesse Stokes. For Counselors Braden, Mejia, the chair and the entire council, Rita Hester. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and we are scheduled to meet again in the IONELA Chamber two weeks from today, Wednesday, December 1st, at 12:00 noon. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We will see you in two weeks. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The council is hereby adjourned.